All right, is there, just like general agreement from council, we move to item number, uh...
Yeah.
All right.
Number seven?
All right, then, we will be progressing to item number, the first item in the agenda relative to this is item number seven, and we need to bring forward item seven, eight, and other, another section of communications, items AA five through AA twenty-six, also AA thirty-five, and AA forty-five, AA forty-six, and forty-nine to fifty-five, and also, double A items five-seven, five-eight, and five-nine, and if that would be incorporated into the motion as well as to hear two speakers of this matter, I would have that motion.
Your worship, I'll be happy to move that, but at the same time, we have a number of other communications that arrived on our desk this evening, just prior to the council meeting, and I think that since people have taken the effort to provide these, they should be received as well.
Certainly.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Councilor Penner and seconded by Councilor Rowe, all in favor? Carry it. And now the speaker listed first is Mr. Don Funk, is Mr. Funk present?
Thank you, your worship, his son. Thank you, your worship, and city council members, ladies and gentlemen. We, as the citizens of this great community, were hit with a bombshell when, on June twenty-second of this year, the Saskatoon Police Commission fired our police chief, Dave Scott. The citizens of this Saskatoon are asking why, and we have come today to demand answers other than the rhetoric that we've heard to this point in time. But let me read some of the comments that I have. These comments come from Dave Scott's dismissal letter, as it was read by him at his media conference, and I quote, "The board wishes to emphasize that this is not termination for cause. The board wishes to thank you for the many years of dedicated service with the Saskatoon Police Service." It's Dave Scott speaking again, repeating his comments. "I have met with Deputy Chief Dan Wicks since the firing, and he emphatically has indicated that the commission did not discuss any new vision, direction, philosophy, or new community policy visions with either Dave or himself prior to June twenty-second." I'd like to have a confirmation of that as well. He went on to say that many opportunities to do so, and that the community meetings were to be a genesis for this new direction. This report was to be tabled in September. Question one, what was your vision when you terminated Dave Scott?
You can carry on with your presentation, sir.
Thank you. Christine Silverberg, first known meeting with the mayor took place on January the fourteenth of two thousand and one. This, I should note, was done only weeks after the mayor stated publicly and shook hands with Chief Scott that they would work together. Question, when did her contract begin? Question two, what were the costs for her services? Question three, is her contract being paid by the police service? Was Chief Scott informed or consulted at any time during his tenure as to her being contracted on his budget and for what purpose? On Thursday, you went to NTR stating that this process would not cost more than three-hundred-thousand dollars. Could you clarify tonight that no other dismissals are imminent? The Police Act of nineteen ninety, under section eighty-eight, allows for a public inquiry to be ordered by the Saskatchewan Minister of Justice if there are justifiable reasons to do so. I would like to officially state this evening that the basis on this clandestine that have been taking place over the last year surrounding Chief Scott's dismissal, that I will be asking for this inquiry to be undertaken. Thousands of citizens will support those councillors who stand up for a non-confidence vote in the presence of the Board of Police Commission, and I, the concerned citizens, and I and above the concerned citizens group, will seek to rally the citizens of this community to come out by the thousands for the next council meeting. I sincerely believe the support will continue to mount and gain momentum for Dave Scott, and we ask council members who do not support this issue to resign. Just like to read a little excerpt from, excerpts from a letter from Jim and Donna Sisions, letter to Patricia Rowe.
Mr. Funk, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, I must remind you that you're at your five-minute mark.
I will, I will conclude in that case. In ending, I would like to state that those who are responsible for this heinous act will be judged by this community. To the councillors who do not support this action, or I applaud you, and so do the citizens For those that don't support it, you'll be responsible to explain your actions at I think it's high time that council starts to leak, to listen to the constituencies of this community, to the, to the taxpayers. Yes, we got you there, and yes, we can also move you out of there. I have much more, but I, I guess my time has ended, so I will respect that. I also have some letters and some petitions to leave with you as well.
Okay. The next person requesting to speak is Mr. Russell Marku, please.
Your worship, city council, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would just like to qualify that my remarks tonight are intended for the Police Commission, but I address them through you, our elected officials, with the hope that you will be responsible for getting answers to our questions and for making the commission accountable for its actions. My name is Russell Marku, I am the chief executive officer of the Yankee Group of Companies headquartered here in Saskatoon. I've always been proud to say that I'm from Saskatoon and proud of the role that I and our company have played in making this a great community. Unfortunately, that pride has greatly diminished in the last few weeks since the firing without cause of our police chief, Dave Scott. The media, the business community, and the public at large have continually asked, what is the reason for this unprecedented action? Your collective answers have been, Chief Scott did not fit with our vision. When asked what your vision was, you openly stated that you didn't have one.[648.49][648.49](laughter) (applause) Let me try and explain to you my frustration and confusion with this. My experience in business, and in particular managing people, has taught me a few things. For instance, you don't fire someone simply because you have in their, a clause in their agreement that allows you to do so. You don't fire someone who is not willing to follow a program or a vision that simply does not exist. You don't fire someone... You don't fire someone who has given you over thirty-two years of dedicated, committed service without having sound credible cause.[706.01][706.01](laughter) (applause) You don't fire someone who has been a leader and an ambassador in your organization and your community. You don't fire someone whose reviews and performance reports for the past five years as your organization's leader have been exceptional. And you don't fire someone...[734.82][734.82](applause) You don't fire someone who has recognized across Canada by his peers as an innovator, a creator, and a leader of progressive, leading-edge programs.[750.23][750.23](applause) You don't fire someone who is the only member of your industry's national association to ever in its existence be asked twice to address the International Association of your industry at its annual conference, and to be asked twice based on your credibility and your reputation as an innovative and creator, creative programmer of services.[785.32][785.32](applause) You don't fire someone who is receiving accolades from his peers such as Julian Fantino, the chief of police for Metro Toronto, who states, "Dave Scott is a committed, dedicated, and honorable man who has a good grasp of all the issues and is a multi-dimensional He goes on to say, "You can't look at community policing as a label, nor can you, for instance, identify a police chief by whether he does or doesn't deliver community policing. There's much more to a police chief's mandate than just the one issue."[840.01][840.01](applause) Or accolades from Roy Berlinkett, deputy commissioner Northwest Region for the RCMP, now retired. He states, and I quote, "He was a leader with a persuasive manner that sought consensus rather than autocratic imposition of decisions. I would hope that the citizens of Saskatoon would ensure that the person or people that are responsible stand in accountability for this most unfortunate decision." And finally, you don't fire someone who has just six months previously been awarded a new three-year contract, agreed to...[901.13][901.13](applause) Agreed to unanimously by the commission that included the very chair of the commission that is now doing the firing.[918.51][918.51](applause) I hope you can see where my frustration and confusion are coming from. Our Police Commission has just acted in total contravention to all of these points and provided us no sound or credible rationale as to why.[941.43][941.43](applause) You owe us, the citizens of Saskatoon, the taxpayers of Saskatoon, answers to some Why was an individual with thirty-two years, over thirty-two years of distinguished service, unceremoniously fired without cause? What is the real reason?[980.43][980.43](applause) How can you measure someone's fit or compliance to a program or vision if it doesn't exist?[996.38][996.38](applause) Why was he released six months after the renewal of a three-year contract that was unanimously approved by a commission that included the present chair, and months before the release of the public consultation meeting results that were supposed to form the genesis for the new direction that the police service would follow? Where is the money going to come from? How can you expect us to accept your position that no jobs will be lost, no programs will be cut, and in fact, you will introduce new or enhanced programs to put officers closer to the community, and still cover the estimated four-to-five-hundred-thousand-dollar costs of your actions and not run a deficit?[1049.01][1049.01](applause) Are you going to cut or freeze programs such as training that will result in uncertified officers patrolling our streets, increased liability to the police service, and endangerment to officers and the public? Is it true that invoices for consultant Christine Silverberg have arrived at the police service dating back to January and totaling thirty-thousand dollars to date? What is the total cost going to be for this consultant? We need honest and believable explanations for these questions. Why, in an unprecedented move, have you put the police service through two transitions by bringing in an outside interim chief when we have a capable deputy chief...[1118.15][1118.15](applause) When we have a capable deputy chief who had already stated he would not be a contender for the chief's position? It's time to cut out the rhetoric and the doublespeak and give us, the citizens of Saskatoon, some solid, credible rationale for your actions, and some honest answers to these and other unanswered questions. To date, your rationale is wrong, your process is wrong, and the impact on this distinguished citizen of Saskatoon and the community of Saskatoon is wrong. To put it bluntly, you blew it.[1164.25][1164.25](applause) (singing) You should be embarrassed and ashamed of yourselves, and if you were employees of our organization... And I was dealing with the results of your actions and the rationale that you have provided for taking these actions, I would have no option but to fire all of you.[1204.01][1204.01](applause) (singing)
Thank you, Mr. Marku. Are there any questions of the speaker? I would, I would ask you a question, sir.
Certainly.
Where did you get the information that the vote by the former board to extend a three-year contract to Dave Scott was a unanimous vote? Because that is incorrect, I want to know where you got the information from.
Well, that was public information, your worship.[1275.58][1275.58](laughter) The information...[1277.24][1277.24](applause)
There are two members of the former board present here today who know that that is not the case, and the, and the, the public release at the news conference at that time in, in December was that the vote was not unanimous. I was asked specifically that question, and it has been erroneously, erroneously reported recently in the Star of Phoenix that it was unanimous. It was indeed not.
Well, I have never read or seen anything that didn't quote it as being unanimous, so that's what I'm basing my information.
So, your answer is that it was, on the public record, it was unanimous?
Yes, I'm basing that fact on what I, as well as I believe everybody else, believe to be a fact.
Okay, that's my only question.[1321.58][1321.58](applause) Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Marku.
Thank you.
Counselor Atchison.
Your worship, I have a notice of motion I wanted to read.
Well, there's a, an agenda spot later in the process for a notice of motion.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I was under the same illusion as the fire chief was earlier that it was relating to the Board of Police Commissioners. If you wish to wait for that, that's quite all right.
I, I would think that, I mean, we need a motion to receive the information and any consideration for referral, and perhaps a motion could be framed within that context. Just, Counselor Sterber?
Yes, your worship, I was going to do that, is move that the information be received and ask that the presenters put forward their presentations to council so that we can refer those to the Police Commission to answer their questions.
All right, is there a second here for that motion? Counselor Paulson? Counselor Wegud?
I just think that it needs to be included, a report back to council.
Now, that would be fine, too.
All right. Counselor Penner, did you have...
Have we heard all the speakers?
No, that's what I was going to move, your worship, so that's just great.
All right, is there some discussion to the motion?
Was, um, no, I support it. Is that all the speakers? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I wonder if I may be heard?
Will the chair be heard?
Agreed.
All right. Given the amount of interest in the matter, I think it's important, at least prudent at this point in time that I make a, a comment or two. Just want to simply remind people of the chronology of events that have brought us to this point. I remind people that last year, in October, there was a municipal election, and people campaigned on various issues. I campaigned for the office of mayor, I campaigned on a theme word of change, and we talked about change, and I talked about policing as one of my platform issues. And as a matter of fact, I'll just read, if I may, the summary of my policing issue with respect to, as it appeared in my campaign brochure. "To restore trust, pride, honor, and credibility by conducting a complete review of the police service and revitalizing the role of the Board of Police Commissioners. Also, to establish a community-based policing model for a safer city." Those are the issues that I campaigned on with respect to policing. I spoke to them at length on numerous occasions. The results of the election were clear. The mandate was delivered, the issue of change was of great concern to the majority of people in the city.
Your pardon?
Now, there was...[1512.47][1512.47](laughter) (applause) Also, with respect to, to the contract of the former chief, the contract signed last December was in fact negotiated and signed by the former Board of Police Commissioners. And I should point out perhaps that in, in line with democratic process, at the first meeting of the executive committee of this very new council, following the election, policing was an issue raised by each and every councillor. Everybody was talking about it. Everybody was talking about it. Subsequent to that, at a, at a, a meeting where we appointed people to boards, commissions, and committees, this council, before you today, decided to replace the entire Board of Police Commissioners, and four new commissioners were, were put into place, two members of council and two citizens at large as required by the Police Act. I remained on the commission because the, the position of mayor is in the, legislated in the Police Act that the mayor must be a member of the board. Now, we have a new board, and we have, have a new mandate, and the former board, before it dissolved on the thirty-first of December, negotiated a three-year contract with the former chief, and the vote on that, as I have said, was a majority decision, was not a unanimous decision. And that has taken us to the present day, January first, the current Board of Police Commissioners took over, so to speak, and we started talking about community policing, and we started talking about traditional policing, and I was able to articulate my views, my personal views, based on experience and opinion with respect to policing, views that I've held for a long, long time, years as a matter of fact, with respect to community policing. What we have in Saskatoon is essentially a traditional policing model with programming layered on, layered on top of it, sensitive community programming, some of which are very, very good, are excellent, and others which have not proven to be that successful. And I add as, as, as an aside, we have seen, we have all witnessed, three attempts to have a community policing station, and all attempts have failed, and it's not a result of resources or funding, it's a result of a commitment to the program. And community stations are part of a community policing initiative.[1667.83][1667.83](laughter) What the, what the board...
Of listening to what he has to say.
What the current board...
Excuse me, your worship, but, you know, we didn't interrupt the speakers at the podium, and we'd appreciate the same respect back, please.
Exactly.
Thank you, Counselor Sterber. What, what the Board of Police Commissioners is after is a community policing model, and we will develop, continue to develop that model. It is a work in progress, and it just doesn't happen overnight, and it just doesn't appear one day suddenly on a piece of paper, and, and we say, this is where we were, this is where we want to be, and this is how we're going to get there. Now, certainly, some of that has to be articulated, but community policing has been talked about for years in this city, and we still don't have it, in my view. We have some community policing initiatives and programs, yes. I am interested in a results-based policing, not, not activity-based. We have to have a system and programs that deliver results and measure those results. It is a shift of philosophy, indeed a shift of the culture of the police organization itself, and it takes a long time to accomplish, but it has to start somewhere, and it's not been happening with status quo attitude with respect to a traditional model, and this board is interested in moving forward. And it includes internal restructuring at this, at the police service itself, and it includes very sensitive issues in this community right now like race and ethnic relationships. For the tenure of the current board to this point, we have encountered, in our discussions with police administration in our meetings, considerable resistance to these advancements. We have had difficulty right from the outset with respect to budget discussions with the police administration. We had suggestions by the administration that they were confused, we had very simple, two-sentence requests sent to them that came back to us for further clarification, and it was believed by some members, to be quite honest about it, that this was an attempt simply to manipulate the board and to stall. simply to manipulate the board into stall. The only solution offered by the administration was a typical response. Give us more money, more money. And this board has asked the police administration to look internally at prioritization, to look internally at programming, to look internally at resource allocation and staff deployment, and to look internally, particularly with respect to the strength and effectiveness of the uniform frontline divisions or sections or patrol section traffic, what have you. Because that's where the outcry is from the public. But still, the board is held in abeyance to that, saying, well, we've shored up the investigative side, the shortage is created at the, at the uniform leading edge, and that's why you need to get more money from your citizens so we can afford more uniformed police officers. This board has never opposed increase to resources, but all they have asked for is an honest reassessment of what we already have and how it's being used. We have articulated to the police administration in, it's over the last six months, that we want programs sustained like school liaison. In fact, we wanted them improved. We want a reinstatement of foot patrol. We want more visibility with bicycle patrol. And the result we get is, the situation that exists right now is that at the end of this bicycle season, the bike patrol has been ordered disbanded. And that's the type, that's, that's one example of the type of resistance that this board has encountered. So we have articulated very clearly to the police administration that we want these community-sensitive programs not only maintained but enhanced. And if it requires a reevaluation of staff deployment and resource allocation, so be it. Do it. Address the priorities as the communities and, and the people are telling the board, through counselors too, by the way, to address those frontline issues. And we will address the need for further resources to address the other areas of, of the police service. And not only do we encounter this resistance, it is also accompanied by, by subtle and not so subtle suggestion that the only way that this police administration can accommodate the board's request is to remove the programs or in fact look at staff layoffs. And that is something that this board is not going to tolerate. We will not tolerate staff reductions. We have encountered other, other examples of resistance as a return to the, to the City Race Relations Committee. That has been met with resistance to this board. The establishment of a, of an employment equity policy and implementation plan has been met with resistance and refusal by this police administration. Those are important issues to this board and we want them addressed and we want to see progress in those regards. We have also, as a board, made some adjustments to the way the board does its business. We have opened up the commission meetings to the public. We now conduct about 90% of the police board business in a public meeting. That's pretty much a complete reversal to the former board, which conducted most of its business in in-camera closed-door sessions. We have instituted an inquiry policy by which people, city counselors, what have you, can make inquiries of the Board of Police Commissioners and can even attend and speak to the board. Never happened before. We are trying to open it up for more transparency and more public input. And yes, we are concerned with the relationships with First Nations and Aboriginal people in Saskatoon. And I am not very proud of the fact that the city of Saskatoon and the Saskatoon Police Service is in, is, is indeed in the microscope by agencies such as the Saskatchewan Human Rights Commission and Amnesty International. We are on watch. We have been placed on watch with respect to policing in our city. And that doesn't please me much, nor the members of the board. Those things need to be changed and we are working in a new direction to accomplish With respect to internal situations with the Saskatoon Police Service, I have said that there needs to be some adjustment there in my view, based on opinion, experience, and the conversations that I have with certain individuals. I think that morale needs to be improved. I think that there are some systems that need to be changed, promotion and transfer policy, recruitment policy, and as a matter of fact, I'll share with you this. Just a few months ago, the Saskatoon City Police Association decided to ask the provincial Board of Police Commission to audit the recruitment practices of the Saskatoon Police Service. As I said, there are some things that need to be fixed and this board is determined in the future to address them. There are issues with respect to a process to identify executive officers for promotion. There are issues with respect to a succession plan which doesn't exist. And there also is the fundamental issue of strategic planning, which ceased to exist five years ago. The Saskatoon Police does not engage in strategic planning. It has substituted that with a series of annual business plans, granted, some of which the themes are carried year to year. But there is no strategic plan, there is no succession plan. That's what we talk about when we talk about the future. Now, I have, I've already covered some of the developments that the board has made with respect to changing how the meetings of the board are conducted. One other issue that the board is dealing with is that for the first time, this board is dealing with the situation that we need a manual of governance, a policy manual, if you like, for the board. None exists. And we talk about in past years of policy, but we need to, we need to collate all that information and establish it into a manual that's understandable for everyone. Now, I just want to conclude here, as I don't want to take the whole evening, but with respect to the process from this point on, the interim chief has been installed. The interim chief is responsible for several things, including but not limited to the following. To do the internal, or an internal scan of the police service. With a new set of eyes, the board believes that maybe some things that have not been forthcoming may now be identified and be forthcoming for the board to consider. His job also includes, to a degree, to prepare this organization for change, for when the permanent chief is selected. Also, to help identify and establish the potential priorities that a new chief will be dealing with. And of course, report these matters back to the Board of Police Commissioners. Now, the chief, the interim chief is also conducting consultations, both internal and external, to the police service. He's talking to the rank and file, individuals, and he's also talking to people external to the service, community leaders, organizations, et cetera. And he will be, he will be assisting in helping this board define its Saskatoon model of community policing, given the fact that he is here for a short time. With respect to the hired consultant, Christine Silverberg, her mandate is to assist the board in a search and selection of a new chief of police, in accordance with the board's direction and wishes. She is committed to ensuring that that process, that selection process is fair, it's impartial, and it's transparent. And she also is conducting consultations, both, both internal to the police service and external, including, I might add, members of city council, as, as is the interim chief. Her function and her objective is to create a profile of what a candidate, the ideal candidate for police chief in the city of Saskatoon in the future will look like. And when that profile has been established, it is on that basis that we, that she will search nationwide for candidates to fall within that profile. It is estimated that the search will conclude by mid-September and she will use her associates to assist her. With respect to funding, we know that this is costing money. We know that the board has approved expenditure. We know that Dave Scott himself receives right off the top $150,000. That was the, that's the amount that was negotiated between the former board and Mr. Scott and his council. Plus, he will receive additional disbursements with respect to normal severance issues, time credit and that sort of thing that would be converted to money. So he will receive that $150,000 plus normal payouts. Christine Silverberg has been contracted for $50,000, plus some disbursements that we estimate may run to 15. So that's a total of approximately $65,000. Interim Chief Matthews has been hired at the existing salary level that the former chief was getting, which is, which is $10,000 per month. Plus, he is getting a cash benefit in lieu of, or a cash payment in lieu of benefits because he's here on a short-term basis. Plus, he is receiving some additional living allowance costs. And we have asked that the police service examine its current budget to see where these costs may be recovered from.[1241.01][1241.01](LAUGHTER). And I would repeat that suggestions and comments made here tonight that have been made before through media that this is going to cost upwards of $400,000, perhaps into the half a million dollar range, I, I reject that. I do not believe that. And I have said so. And by the way, I didn't say that the cost was capped at $300,000 either. So anyway, to move forward, the board objectives are to proceed and to utilize input from city council as much as possible, given the fact that the role of the Board of Police Commissioners and the role of counselors are different. We want to work closely with the counselors because they represent the people in their various wards and they know what the issues are with respect to policing. We are considering the formulation of a discussion paper with regard to this matter. We want to establish all the timelines. As I said before, we want to be open and as transparent as possible. And we will inform council, police unions, et cetera, of the process and the game plan. So I say to everyone in conclusion that it's a new board with a new mandate, elected duly by a democratic process. The board is moving forward. We have a commitment to community policing. We will develop the Saskatoon model over time. We will integrate into that improvements to the Saskatoon Police Service itself. We are open, transparent board and this decision has been made and we are moving forward. And I will conclude my remarks at this time. Counselor Atchison.
Yes, I do have a notice of motion if we want to do it now. I, I still don't have a problem waiting till the seventh item on the list, but that would be around midnight. Let's see. If that's quite all right.
Okay, my only concern, Counselor Atchison, is that it is...
I have no problem with the process at all. I don't mind waiting.
Okay, tell the appropriate location on the agenda.
On the agenda. I'm just thinking that we did the first two items because of the police chief's concern of overcrowding and this will wait till 11 o'clock tonight.
Or whatever.
At that point. And if that's what we want, that's quite all right.
Okay, Counselor O.
Uh, your worship, I don't, I don't think we should wait. I think we should deal with it now. Um, I think we, uh... But what I, my question is, when is it the, when's the appropriate time if we want to speak to the motion after Counselor Atchison makes it or?
Well, if it's a notice, if it's a notice of motion, if it's a notice of motion, of course, we need to vote as to waive.
But with a 100% unanimous vote, we can waive notice of motion, correct?
Right. I guess my, my only difficulty is procedurally, can we bring forward that agenda item now? If there's a motion and agreement from council, we can move the notice of motion to the present time?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do it with a motion, seconded and voted on then.
Thank you. I move that we bring notice of motion forward.
Okay, moved by Counselor Sterberg, seconded by Counselor McCann. Are we all in favor?
Agreed.
Okay, Counselor Atchison.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I'd like to apologize to all the counselors here about the programs that are out there, the news about the notice of motion that was coming up tonight. I had only spoke to a few people. Where the leak was and where it got to the public, first of all, I don't know. All I can tell you is this notice of motion was to happen tonight without any preamble that everyone in the council chambers that are counselors should be given exactly the same opportunity as everyone else. Therefore, when the media asked me what the notice of motion was going to be tonight, I declined to tell them. I told them that they would see tonight when we got here. And therefore, I will read my notice of motion now to the council of the city of Saskatoon. Whereas, by the Police Act 1990 and the Section 31.3, the Board of Police Commissioners may make directives and are not inconsistent with the Police Act 1990 or regulations setting general policy for the governing and administration of the police service. Two, by the Police Act 1990, Section 31.1b, the Board of Police Commissioners is responsible for providing general direction, policy, and priorities for the police service, which has failed to do. Three, in carrying out its mandate, the Board of Police Commissioners have failed to comply with the Police Act 1990, Section 31.1b, and have purported to act to require dismissed Chief Scott to carry out his duties according to a non-existent and developing vision for the Saskatoon Police Service. The Board of Police Commissioners acts by written directive. No directive of a majority of the board may pursuant to subsection 31.3 exist to support the termination of dismissed Chief Scott according to an objective standard. Four, the Board of Police Commissioners are required to have a recording secretary and keep a record of their proceedings. Five, the Board of Police Commissioners has not formulated a general direction, policy, and priorities for its new community police, policy model and a vision, and hence has imposed a non-existent standard on dismissed Chief Scott. Six, the Board of Police Commissioners have purported to terminate the employment of former Chief Scott without cause and without directives requiring him to act according to a particular policing model. Seven, the council of the city of Saskatoon is authorized on the Urban Municipality Act 1984, Section 5, brackets 1, as follows. A council made by bylaw provide for the opportunity of any board that it considers desirable for the purpose of managing and operating or advising in management and operation of any activity of the urban municipality and in the extension and improvement of its service. Eight, the council has appointed by bylaw persons to the Board of Police Commissioners, namely Patricia Rowe, Daniel R. Ish, QC, Leanne Belgar Daniels, Miles Height, the mayor sitting as chair ex officio. Nine, by Interpretation Act 1995, Section 22, the power in an act, e.g. the Urban Municipality Act 1984, to appoint includes the power to terminate the appointment of a person so appointed. The power in enactment to appoint a public officer includes the power to, B, terminate the appointment of or remove or suspend the public officer. Ten, members of the Board of Police Commissioners who were appointed, excluding thereby the mayor who holds office ex officio, did fail to give directives in writing to dismiss Chief Scott and communicate any changes in their general directions and policy and to record their preceding changes in the police model as required by the Police Act 1990, Sections 31.3 and 4. And arbitrarily and without principle dismissed the police chief and held him to a standard and directives which they did not make known and do not exist. Eleven, the boards of the, the members of the Board of Police Commissioners did not follow due process in their dealings with dismissed chief of police Scott. And that's what this is all about. They did not evaluate dismissed Chief Scott's performance according to an objective or known standard and did not invite him to be heard on the grounds for his dismissal. 11.2, they did not carry out their statutory mandate under, under Section, the Police Act 1990, Section 31.1b, to provide general direction, policy, and priorities for the police service. They dismissed Scott before providing general direction, policy, and priorities against which his performance could be measured. 11.3, they did not communicate to dismissed Chief Scott the character and elements of the policing model which consultant Silverberg had commenced formulating with the Board of Police Commissioners without, as required by due process, consulting the dismissed chief of police Scott. 11.4, they did not make known to dismiss Chief Scott the standard of performance required in writing so that due performance of his obligations as police chief could be valid, evaluated by an objective standard as opposed to an undeveloped vision, not yet recorded, as a directive of the majority of the Board of Police Commissioners. 11.5, they dismissed former Chief Scott without first having set up standards and a policing model by a, by a majority directive. This offends the Charter of Rights and the Police Act 1990, Sections 31.4, and general principles of common law governing the terminations of persons holding public office. Twelve, the members of the Board of Police Commissioners are required... Twelve, the members of the Board of Police Commissioners are required by law to observe due process in termination of a public officer notwithstanding such appointment, maybe at the pleasure of the board. Such due process includes applying an objective and known standard to the performance of his duties, and giving to the person affected, i.e. dismissed Chief Scott, an opportunity to make an answer to the allegations against him. Thirteen, the termination of dismissed Chief Scott before the Board of Police Commissioners could formulate their vision for a community policing model and reduce it to a directive supported by a majority of the Board of Police Commissioners was an abuse of power, because the board acted arbitrarily without first having or making known the standard hereby dismissed chief was to be judged by. Fourteen, that a majority of the members of the police commission did not give a directive to the dismissed Chief Scott as to a policing model which he should deliver. They were unable to agree among themselves as to the policing model for no record of any majority decision of the Board of Police Commissioners, providing a directive to dismiss Chief Scott was produced or shown to exist. Now therefore, it is moved that, one, that the council of the city of Saskatoon do declare its non-confidence in the members of the Board of Police Commissioners for failure to follow process in the termination of dismissed Chief Scott. Two, that council of the city of Saskatoon empowered by the Interpretation Act 1995, Section 22b, to terminate the appointment of or remove or suspend the public officer where it has the power so to appoint, does hereby terminate the appointment of Patricia Rowe, Daniel R. Ish, QC, Leanne Bellegarde Daniels, Miles Height, from office as members of the Board of Police Commissioners of Saskatoon, effective on passing of this motion.
Thank you. Just a procedural question to the clerk, we need a second to this motion before we consider waiving?
No.
Or no, you're just identifying the motion?
I'm identifying the motion.
Okay.
Not at this meeting, you need a motion to consider it at this meeting.
Yes, but we need a motion to waive the notice, do we not?
Yeah, to waive.
All right. Somebody prepared to make that motion?
I'll move it.
Move the Counselor Rowe, seconded, Counselor Steerburg. Now, to waive notice has to be unanimous vote?
Discussion? There's no discussion.
Can we?
Not on a notice, we're voting on the waiving, so we need to, we need to vote, right?
But, yes, it has to be unanimous.
All in favor of the notice to waive?
Can I ask a question first?
Motion.
This, so is there no opportunity to speak to this particular?
Well, what we're doing is voting on waiving notice, and then I think if this passes, we can deal with his motion right now.
Okay.
But we need to vote on waiver.
But, sorry, Your Worship, but there's a lot of things that have come out of this that I would hope that the city solicitor could comment on, because there are all kinds of different...
Yes, but we need, do we need the motion before us in order to discuss it?
So we have to waive notice in order to ask those questions?
In order to have it discussed tonight, you have to waive notice, otherwise, it's delayed until the next meeting of the council, which is in August. Right?
Let's go.
All right, are we in favor of waiving notice? It has to be unanimous. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. All opposed?
You have a recorded vote, Your Worship?
I'm sorry?
What does that?
You have a recorded vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, then I'll call the question again to record the vote. All those in favor of waiving notice? Counselor Paulson, Counselor Rowe, Counselor Swiston, the mayor, Counselor Height, Counselor Steerburg. Opposed? Counselor Wiegand, Counselor McCann, Counselor Fortowski, Counselor Atchison, Counselor Penner. So waiver has not been granted, so therefore, the matter will come back before council at the next meeting.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
So, so we've put... I'm just, I want to make sure that we understand.
Get out your legal...
Just wait a moment here.
Worship?
Them.
Can I just ask a question?
The same one that's been asked five years, but the issue's on the other.
Okay. Does this indicate then, because, because we didn't have a majority vote here, that we, a unanimous vote, sorry, then we can't speak, we can't speak tonight?
No, the motion comes forward.
So if we wanted to talk about the vision and all those kinds of things, we can't talk till next month?
No, there is no motion to speak to, and there's nothing to debate tonight.
And so there's no other opportunity tonight to do that?
Your Worship, if I could, as a matter of clarification, this is the most serious issue that's come before me while in the 15 years I've been on council, and it is very, very serious. I have never had a, seen a public reaction against a decision like this, ever. And it takes some time, and I want to talk to a lot of people before I get into debate
So Madam Clerk, a question on procedure...
So I don't want to be blamed for not talking about my vision.
With respect to, I don't believe that we can, that we can engage in any discussion today.
No, there's no debate on the, on the motion, at all.
Okay. All right, we are moving back then into communications to item number one.
Your Worship, may I?
Just take, we'll take a moment.
May I suggest we take a break for five minutes?
Five-minute break, five minutes. Five minutes.